Okay, I'd like to call this meeting of the Select Board of October 12th to order by roll call.
Kilcorn, present.
Smith, present.
Krantz and present. And now all the meetings are able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the Constitution, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the common good, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you all. Did you gentlemen have a chance to read the minutes?
I did. I did.
Stop wondering, John.
I just want to throw a piece in. Yep, my brother, madam chair, I would move that we approve the minutes of the Select Board meeting of September 28, 2022 as written.
I will second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Kilcorn, aye.
Krantz and aye. Thank you, comma, as always nicely done. Okay, the first item we have is the PFA Litigation Service Agreement with Sandman Law.
Yeah, I brought it up for the last meeting.
I'm not finished with my sentence.
Ah, I know. Just got me off. Carry on. I'll wait.
Who's the boss here? I forget. Well, I just wanted to mention, this is the, the PFAs is the, we had a presentation by Harold Vaughn a few months ago, and this is, this is the result.
Are you going to say everything I just said? Or you said everything I was going to say? Anyway, this would be the agreement in the case that we're interested in participating in that. I know we did have some, what most likely was a false reading, I think Ryan said, and that well was closed, and we're looking at potentially reopening that one. But we've had some other little numbers that were less than the treatment amount, but obviously they still exist. So, agreements in front of you. I think John may have had a question, which we can certainly look into.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I'm assuming Brian Mazur or Greg Corver or our counsel has looked at this, and hopefully they feel it's to our favor. I mean, I think it's the right thing to do. I think, I don't think we risk anything with it. It's pretty ironclad regarding, then again, they're taking all the risk regarding, you know, they are taking...
They're putting out all the work.
They're putting all the work in, so I understand the 25% fee. I just thought that, I guess to protect us, if we did incur any expenses, I mean, their paragraph, their fee on page two of the legal services agreement, calculation of contingent fee, second sentence, "All contingent fees had to be calculated based on client's gross recovery after deduction of costs and expenses as defined in paragraph eight." They'd say contingent fee is calculated by multiplying the gross recovery by the appropriate fee, 25. It is what it is, 25%, 75%. But then when you see all the, there are going to be a lot of cost, a lot of fees and overall litigation costs to do something like this. And after reading it all, I mean, it all depends on the judgment, of course, but hypothetically, I was thinking if it was a hundred, just a hundred thousand dollars, and, you know, the litigation costs were eighty, eighty thousand, then, you know, they're going to get twenty, they can't get 25% because that would be more, 25, that'd be more than what's left over in, you know, in the hundred thousand. So, their cut, their cutoff, I think, from what I read, would be twenty thousand. That's all they could get. That's all the recovery would be. So, my thought on it was if we had any legal fees, and the only ques, you may want to run this by Greg or whichever one is looking at this, if we had any cost along the way from them, if we had to look at documents, provide documents, and they had a few hours into it, you know, I would, I was thinking, "All contingent fees had to be calculated based on a client's gross recovery before deduction of costs and expenses for client and attorney," for attorney and client, meaning us. So, I'd like to think that if we had any legal fees, it ought to be taken out of that, maybe it'd be ninety thousand, and then the recovery, net recovery, would be ten. But again, they're going to base the 25% on a hundred, so it's going to be twenty-five, but it's really going to wind up being ten. But we'd at least get our costs paid. I mean, it wouldn't matter in that case because they're going to be limited, but if it was like a hundred and fifty, it was more than all the cost, and there was a proportion allocation of them and us. If we got our cost deducted, whatever they may be, along with their cost, we'd be a little bit better off. We'd get our cost, and then we'd still get 25%, maybe 75% of the net, and I think we'd be a little better off if we had any out-of-pocket. A little bit better. Does that make any sense at all?
No.
It doesn't?
No. So, if it's a hundred thousand dollars, the three different firms are getting 25% of it, so they would get twenty-five thousand dollars of it, and they would be divided up with that one company getting fifty-two, the other one getting twenty, and the other one getting twenty-eight. So, we would still, you know, all of the clients would get the seventy-five thousand dollars divided by however many clients.
Yeah, I'm just saying, if we had, if it was not in there, any cost we have, we pay.
But we don't have any cost. This is all coming out of the judgment.
I know, but I'm just thinking, can we have some cost along the way? Could we have some...
So, I know for the opioid stuff, which is very similar, class action lawsuit, when I was in Beckett, we did not incur anything other than whatever they were doing.
Okay, I mean, if we did, that was my only concern, if we had something happen, and we had to lay out some money for KP Law.
There may be some time that we have to, you know, Ryan or I have to, you know, give them our information, but that's minor.
It's time.
I know, if Greg and Brian are okay, I mean, I could bring that up to them to see if does it make any difference? Should we have that built in or not? Maybe we, maybe it's not a big deal. If we don't have any expenses, it won't be any, it's a moot point anyway. It's only if we had five or ten thousand dollars of legal fees that it might help us, it might save a little, that's all.
But I don't understand where you think the legal fees on our part are coming from, because this, any of the fees for Sandman is, is coming out of the judgment, if perchance there is a judgment. It's not coming out of our pocket at all.
No.
You're using them as a special counsel in this case, so they would be doing everything KP wouldn't be doing.
Any of it.
I just didn't know if they, they would have to call KP and ask for certain documents pertaining to the town. I suppose they'd go through you for that directly. But if they had some request that we couldn't address, and it had to come from KP Law, I can't give you an example, but if that happened, they're on the clock, and we're going to pay some money. And it's after all this, you know, probably not. There probably won't be a lot, but that was my only, I don't know what it could be, but with, with third-party stuff going on, and litigations and everything else, I just don't know if, if we'd have to rely on them to provide information back to a Sandman Law, and then, you know, we'd get a bill from KP Law somewhere along the way.
The only information they would need would be from us at the town hall, or from the DPW. I mean, this is more of a DPW water situation than it is for us.
It's just hypothetical if we were out-of-pocket. Does it sound like we would be opioid thing? We weren't. But in reading it, it just seemed like, well, if we incur a lot of money, I just hate to think that we go through all this, and then the recovery is so small that Sandman Law gets their share, and we're out-of-pocket a couple of, after all, we go down this whole road for two or three or four years, you know.
David?
I'm not, I'm not, I don't really have any concerns over this, and the paragraph that I read in section C here, it seems to me that limits the liability the town has as far as being liable for any expenses. Am I correct in saying that? If there's a judgment that is less than what the attorney fees are, then...
Right.
Right, the attorney is going to be based their, their rate on whatever judgment is awarded to town, if any. So, I don't see that there's any concern, to be honest with you.
Yeah, that last sentence is, "We won't pay any, anything in excess over this recovery to the attorney." Again, I was just thinking if we had any of our own independent out-of-pocket costs, that's all. I'm in favor going forward with it, but I just thought we might run, run that by Brian Mazur, and just, if he thinks it's stupid, then that's fine, or Greg or...
Somebody in there, one of the environmental...
Yeah. No, I'm not against it. I think it's a good thing. I mean, I don't think we can lose, but I just may be overthinking it. I don't know.
Well, with us running this by KP Law, John, as you want Bill to reach out to them and run this by them, you yourself have already incurred a cost. Just mentioning that.
I know, but we, no, we do have to do that sort of stuff. That's the only one, but that's a legitimate one. But after that...
Just say it. Oh, after that, then it's...
I know, I know. There's a cost to looking at it, but, all right, I'm fine. I'm fine with it.
But you're not.
Anyway, I just, I would still ask them that question to see if, if we're missing stuff, just in case if we're missing something.
Next time we're chatting with them.
I trust lawyers. I do.
You do?
Most of them.
Something wrong with you? I got seven in the family, by the way, so, and I love them all. Doesn't mean I'm no lawyer. Okay, well, then I would entertain a motion to move to enter into agreement to have the Thomas Sterling represented by Sandman Law in the lawsuit against manufacturers of PFAs, and to appoint Bill Caldwell as the authorized signatory for the legal agreement, and to act as primary individual to communicate with the attorneys regarding this subject matter.
I'll move the motion in those words.
I'll second that motion.
Afraid to ask, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Kilcorn, aye.
Smith, aye.
Krantz and aye.
Learned not to go too far with that.
Well, I'm trying. Okay, and then the proposed step changes, this is something that Bill gave us a couple of weeks ago, and does anybody have, do you want to give a little synopsis, Bill?
Sure. So, what we have presented there is one evaluation tool that we have, and two would be the proposed changes within the salary schedule. So, if you're on the beginning end, steps one, two, three, and going to four, it would change with a positive evaluation in that year, each year. If it's between four and seven, it would be every other year and a positive evaluation. And steps eight and up to eleven, assuming the step had an eleven, there's two that don't, it would be every third year and the positive evaluations. In the case that there was an exemplary thing, evaluation, there is a chance that somebody could increase more than one step in a year pending positive evaluations. And the last piece is that we would hopefully make our decision on what a COLA would be for the non-union employees by January, so that we can plan for the budget.
Any questions, John?
Yeah, just one or two minor ones. On page two of the self-evaluation, or page three, excuse me, a uniform performance criteria is seven. And then on page four, I guess I'm just trying to figure out what, what's the differences here. On page four, there's three performance objectives. Is this, how do these...
So, what is one that they would do themselves, which I'm probably not going to do for most every employee, but then what they're being evaluated on, so that the self-evaluation is separate.
Okay. So, all right, so that's, that's page two and three.
Yeah.
And page four is, I don't know, I mean, I guess that was my question, I wasn't sure what page four was, the performance objective update status to be completed by evaluators. So, I guess it's the supervisor, this is self, all right.
So, like, I would do all, you know, take care of it for all the department heads, and then if people have, you know, staff in their offices, then they would take care of those.
I would have thought this would have been a little more similar to this, but it's a little different.
I have a feeling that the self-evaluation tool probably won't be used in every situation.
Okay. Okay, I mean, I like to...
And it can be refined as you go forward. This is not...
Well, the only other question is a former finance committee person.
How much is it going to cost?
I don't know, we don't know. But the timing, well, we know, I know these evaluations, I can't remember when, I just said they're going to be done, but I know you wanted the COLA, I think, acted upon, I don't know, it was by February 1st. I would think FinCom and us might want to delay the COLA decision until we know what the proposed salary increases are, you know, just, because if we go ahead with a COLA of two or three percent, and then all of a sudden, you know, the average across the board for the salaries, two or three percent, you know, we're talking six percent, and I think, and then we go back and look at the overall impact on the taxes, we may think, well, that may be, may be a little high, and I don't know if we can reduce the COLA right up until town meeting. That was my point, do we want to act on the COLA early, before we know everything, or do we, or can we do it and change?
I would do, I mean, they're two separate things in my mind. I mean, if you look at the contracts that we have, people are getting the step changes within the CBAs regardless of anything, so they could be getting significantly more percentages over their terms than these folks are here. So, the COLA would be bringing the entire scale up, what people get within it is based on them.
Right, and I would think the COLA would be more, more tax-sensitive though, I mean, it's the entire budget, you know, once we know, once we have everything, the capital and the salaries and everything else.
Three percent COLA was about seventy thousand dollars in this year's budget.
Right.
But the salary changes were about twenty-five, the step, getting people on the steps.
I mean, it's something we can't predict. I was, I just didn't know what the timing, how this is going to be, you know, handled going forward from January up through town meeting, you know, and I think we have the ability to make changes right up until the time the warrant is, the warrant is sent to the printer, yeah, so.
All right, you know, I've got to, got to start with something and tell everybody what to base their things off of.
Yeah, and part of the whole idea of having them start earlier, so that we're not in a situation like last year, where we were really down to the wire by the time we got the warrant out and printed and all that business. So, this is encouraging people to get, especially with capital, getting their requests in, so that, you know, we can move forward with that knowledge.
Yeah.
And, but the COLA, like you said, doesn't need to be, you know, written in stone right off the bat.
Right.
So, I mean, really, the, well, the calendar, I haven't looked at it, but I'm guessing that the March meeting is still a March meeting. So, that's for all the capital request and budget request, et cetera. And even there, we will have a better handle on what we can offer, not just because of our budget, but just see what's being offered by the feds or the state as far as COLA is concerned.
Initial budgets get handed out on Jan. 23rd. How does that relate to when step changes were carried out? Is there, is there a fixed time that evaluations would be done?
Like, I don't expect all of them to be done this fall. I mean, if we're just putting it in now, that means that's a lot of people to get done before then, and I've been here, you know, five months, I don't know if I can make it a full evaluation on everyone. I probably could, but...
But do you expect, like, for example, January, you know?
I mean, I would say that they should put in whatever the request is and what they think it is at that point with their, with their budget.
All right, so it'll be part of the budget that are, let's see, those are coming in January 23rd is the distribution, and you get them earlier than that, you get them on January 6th.
Yeah.
So, you assume step changes would be factored into that?
And if they're not, I can make the changes myself.
So, that's the timing.
Okay.
And about, so about a third of the staff is within that one to four step range, about a third is in that mid-range, and about a third is at the, you know, every third year range, eight to twelve, eight to eleven, so.
And yes, Maureen, there's still the March scheduling in there, so.
I didn't really want to jump ahead, but it kind of goes hand in hand.
Yeah, well, it's very thorough. I mean, I know it brings us in line with our peer towns and communities with the classifications and the grades and steps, so, I mean, it's just a matter of, now the evaluations will be interesting and probably challenging, but I mean, it's what we got to do. I mean, that's what, how it works, so.
David?
The other towns that were used for comparison, are they using a similar step process? Was it...
Some are automatic, because they're, well, they may not be non-union, but some, some of them have union town hall staff. Some are automatic, some are timed, some are just evaluation-based, so this was kind of a mixture of all of them, so.
And I'd just like to add, having worked in communities where there's been a similar step, grade and step system, it's good for morale, for the, for the employees to know that there's something, not necessarily guaranteed, but there's something that is there in concrete, not, well, let's give John a dollar an hour next year, you know? I know he doesn't deserve it, but that is, that's all I was, I think it's a nice job, and I think it's, I think it should be implemented, this program.
Yeah. I always thought the step program was a decent way to go, and I am a proponent of job performance since square one. One thing I think that when we do evaluations, you, you know, people have to understand that there's going to be a time where they're going to reach the top of their step or the top of their grade, so what, what's their plan after that? You know, do they just go? I don't mean we have to decide, the individual has to decide, do I stay in this position knowing this is the top of where I can be? So, do I just look forward to getting a COLA, which is obviously, you know...
When I was teaching, there was, you know, whatever steps and grades, I was as far to the right as I could based on my education, so there was no more. The only thing I could do was have the more, you know, years of service, so. When you're in the bottom right-hand corner, you're in the bottom right-hand corner. So, after 14 years, if you're...
Well, I just think people, individuals need to understand that, because I do know, it's like, you know, people do come back and say, oh, well, I've been here X amount of time, but this particular job only goes to this point.
And then one of the other parts of the bylaw that probably should be rewritten is the merit slash longevity one, to make it actually for longevity.
Yes.
Ends at?
Ten or fifteen?
The longevity? Oh, no, it's more than that.
It ends fifteen. It ends pretty early, and it's, that longevity definition is like being there for a long time and having a benefit of doing that.
Yeah, for some reason, I thought it was longer than ten or fifteen, but it could be wrong. So, anyway, I would entertain a motion that we accept Bill's recommendation for our steps and grades as we move forward.
So, move.
Second it.
All those in favor?
Kilcorn, aye.
Smith, aye.
Krantz and aye. So, a topic that's always kind of fun at this time of year, because...
I think we're going to leave.
You're not leaving anywhere. You're going to be down in record. It's the holiday schedule.
Yep.
So, the proposal out there is...
Got it on my report at the top section. Obviously, we've had different things, it's somewhere in your packet, I don't know if it's a separate, or in there, but we've done various things since 2018. My recommendation is that the staff would take four hours the Friday after Thanksgiving, the four hours there, and we close, and then the Friday before the Christmas weekend, we close and no time charged.
So, closing on the 23rd of December for Christmas, coming back on the 26th?
So, the holiday would be celebrated the 26th, so it would be the 27th, the Tuesday.
The holiday is being celebrated the 26th, so why are we taking Friday? Oh, because it's the four hours.
Yeah.
So, scratch those four hours, scratch the four hours, okay, for Thanksgiving.
Yeah, so we have them take the time and close the Friday, and then give them four hours.
Four hours after Thanksgiving, and the Friday before Christmas, which is the 23rd, I believe, and...
That's eight hours for a holiday.
Oh, it's four hours for a holiday, when they have to take their time.
Oh, Thanksgiving isn't a holiday, I mean, the Friday after is not. And always my, my thing on the Friday after Thanksgiving is that there are people that come home for Thanksgiving, and this is when they come and they get maybe their marriage license or whatever they have to do town-wide. I mean, I've never won that conversation, you know, so I don't see it changing, but, you know, I just, I just want people to be aware that the Friday is going to be closed, people, so if you have anything, you're going to have to come in Wednesday, and Wednesday is a full day, right? Before Thanksgiving.
It is on paper a full day. I know we have closed early in the past, but I think we probably should at maybe 12:30.
Why would we do that?
Love to cook and do family things and travel.
Really, you're going to cook?
No, I don't cook.
Right.
I don't know, probably peel a potato or something.
Well, that would be...
Just one.
Why wouldn't that be somebody taking personal time then? So, I, again, I just look at it as there are people that come back home on that holiday, and there's things that they need to do through the town. Maybe they need a birth certificate, maybe they need this, maybe they need that, a marriage license, maybe they're crazy, I don't know. So, but it's not up to me, John, it's up to you and, and Jeb.
I mean, I think it's reasonable, I think it's similar to what we've done before, you know, each year, so.
Close early on Wednesday, not be open on Friday?
Well, yeah.
Okay, and then at Christmas?
The day...
You're closed on Friday?
Friday before Christmas.
And then you're closed on Monday, because that's actually the holiday.
That's right. That's right. That's what, I think that's what we've done before.
Well, they have it all written here for you.
I know. I haven't read it all.
Yeah.
I don't have the Wednesday before Thanksgiving piece on there.
No. And it shouldn't be on there.
Will and read and disagree.
People would make plans.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I mean, and I, and I, just even myself personally, I know I'm working the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, what time I get out, I don't get personal time, though, so, still get my turkey and stuffing done.
You need to pause. I'm understanding.
It's the nature of the beast. All right, so somebody make a motion.
Make a motion, what Bill's proposal is, four hours after Thanksgiving, meaning that the day after Thanksgiving is closed, and the Friday before Christmas, the 23rd of December, will be closed.
Well, there's more. Now, they want the Wednesday, they want to close early Wednesday. They, meaning Bill, because he's got to go home, stuff the turkey, apparently, not buying that.
Doesn't affect me nearly as much.
No, I don't. So, you could at least be in the building.
Deal.
There you go.
I'll stay.
So, okay, get you and maybe another staff member to be around.
Close early on Wednesday, I don't know what time, 1:30, 1:30, something like that?
Whatever you guys say. I'll be here.
Come on, pick a time.
Say one o'clock.
I have to be friends from 12:30.
That's huge.
Huge.
To hold a cup of coffee.
All right.
I hate doing this stuff, this one.
Well, yes, we know that, John. You don't want to be the bad guy. Meanwhile, I can be here, sit here, and then go, wow, what a wench.
Sorry.
It's my season, so, the motion is...
The motion is...
Close 11:25, which is the Friday after Thanksgiving.
Right.
And then we're going to close the Wednesday before Thanksgiving at 1:00.
Right.
And then we're going to close the 23rd, which is Friday, before Christmas, and then we're, Christmas holiday is actually the 26th. That's the motion.
That's the motion.
I will second that motion.
Okay. All those in favor?
You'll coin aye.
Smith aye.
Krantz aye. Putting out your numbers.
No further discussion.
Please, God, John. Who invited you, anyway? Okay, this is part of your baby now. It's the annual town meeting calendar, Finance Committee budget schedule. So, and this will go to all of the department heads and possibly some committees, right? Have you already adopted this, Joe?
We are waiting for a discussion here at the Select Board, and we're gonna discuss it again for a few process-related issues that Lynn Shepherd has brought up on the meeting that we have on the 22nd, 27th of this month. It's not affecting the calendar. She just wants to get clear on the process that we're gonna use within this calendar.
Okay. So, timeline?
She was fine with the timeline.
The timeline is fine. October through November. By November 9th, all the departments are supposed to be sending their request in. Yeah, and the...
Yes.
Capital requests should be in by November 18th.
Correct.
It's very ambitious. I like it. December, everybody meets with the Capital Committee. That's the department and the various committees in town. The 22nd, or the December through February, FinCom in there will meet with the department heads. Did you already assign?
We haven't. We're intending to do that on the 27th and appoint the liaisons for the respective departments.
Okay. And then, all the budget requests are supposed to be returned to Mr. Caldwell by January 6th?
Correct.
All right. Questions, revisions, all done through February, January, the ATM warrant opens January 17th. And January 23rd, the budgets are distributed to FinCom and CBC. Okay. And then, we're not there yet. But that gets us right through February. It's a long process. All right. And then, the meeting with all the departments is...
March 4th.
March 4th?
Yeah, Saturday.
No, that's the CBC sledboard budget hearings. On that Saturday, it's March 4th?
Yes.
When all the different departments will come in.
Yeah, that's similar to the stand and present we had last year.
Yeah.
I'd probably say that on page one at the bottom, March 4th is, I think, the second sentence from the bottom.
What are you talking about?
Page one. Didn't that say March 4th?
Oh, yeah.
Fourth, I think, instead of March 6th.
Yep.
Very minor. Otherwise, good. I mean, it is ambitious.
Thank you, John.
Hopefully, not too many snow days will interfere with all this, but...
It's snow in this winter.
Yeah.
No, it's gonna snow. And then, the warrant closes on March 17th.
Well, on Friday, so Patrick's ready.
Yep.
Okay.
All right, April 3rd, try and get it done and ready and send it to the printer. And town meeting this year is on May 1st.
As early as we can get.
Maybe, maybe.
All right. We have to make sure that we notify the school that we're gonna need the Choxes School. So, I'd entertain a motion to approve the calendar put forward by Finance Committee and Mr. Caldwell.
I'll move that we approve the finance budget calendar as put forward by FinCom and the town administrator.
I will second that.
Okay. Further discussion, Mr. King?
I'll just make the one revision that John pointed out. I'll get you an updated revision to reflect that. No further comment. The only other question I had, and I discussed this with Bill before, the Select Board has a March 15 date to discuss budget and capital requests with departments and boards, committees as needed. And then, the warrant closes on 17th. Do you see any timing issues of the 15th to the 17th there? That was my only question and concern.
Well, the March 15th to discuss budgets and capital requests with the departments and boards, we should pretty much have that covered at the March 4th. I mean, that would be my personal goal.
What I was thinking you would say, but the timing's tight there. So, I just wanted to make sure you were...
Yes, between the 15th and the 17th. So, I think that we should make an effort to, you know, at least have all our notes done by March 4th. And then, our follow-on meeting, maybe move that up a bit to the week before. It's not unusual that the Select Board would meet a little bit more often during this process. So, if we, the hearings are March 4th, and we have to have a meeting that following Wednesday so that we can get it done by the 17th. I don't have any problem with that. I doubt the gentleman that...
That's done that before.
Spent a lot of time with you.
As long as you're comfortable making the final warrant schedule.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. David?
If we have to come in for a special meeting like that, do we get overtime?
Yes, absolutely.
Perfect. I'm in.
All right.
About half time zero, we're still...
Okay. So, we have a motion. We have a second. We had some discussion, and I would entertain a vote on that.
You'll coin aye.
Smith aye.
Krantz aye. Still here. Okay. And then, we have Bill's report that he's gonna give to us smoothly.
So, it looks like the paving got pushed back a week. They thought it was gonna start this week, but may begin next week barring any other complications. Taking care of the PFAS stuff. Ryan and I are working on a risk management grant for the DPW for some work zone safety equipment, roadside stuff. Matt and I submitted the beach bathroom ADA grant, so hopefully, it can offset some of the costs of upgrading that a little bit and offset some of the DCR money being used for some other things. With the final report being updated, we did update the personnel bylaw information with the new steps, grades, all that stuff. We've done the holiday hours. They have been installing the playground. I don't know if you've been up near the school, but they're looking at completion in a couple weeks. So, hopefully, that goes smoothly, and then I can work on getting the fence installed once that's complete. Nothing on the couple other items. Still working on getting quotes. I only have one for Peg's Pond so far. We're one for 10. I just got another number today to call, so we can see if we can get that work done, maybe before the winter. If not, we'll look to the spring.
Bill? On that one, remind me. I have two other names for you for that project.
Thanks. We had the pre-conference, pre-bid walkthrough this morning for this roof. A few contractors came to take a look at it. So, we've got everything out to bid, and the due date for that is 11:02. Hoping that we get some decent bids, some pricing with everything that needs to happen, and probably have to get through the winter as is. But it could probably be a project early in the spring. Again, barring any complications, timing, equipment, materials, all that stuff. I don't think there's anything too new on the beach. We're waiting on Conservation to finish their hearings regarding it. McCarty's been putting all their information to them and just had to do a little more engineering on some of the stormwater, right? They are doing the design for the Maple Street sidewalks, and I did send a update to you on the downtown. Apparently, I hadn't been incredibly clear in everything that was going on. So, I guess I'll just give the update for everybody to have you signed in February 22 with Weston and Sampson to do the parking sidewalks, streets upgrade as part of the renovation. Also included burying utilities. Shortly after I started, we met at the kickoff meeting. That was May 18th. As we were out there, we talked about what do we do with all the drainage as we start doing things, water mains. I mean, we don't wanna then repave and put new sidewalks in if then we have to rip something up. So, we put in a grant through Mass Works to hopefully do get the engineering funded to look at replacing the water main and figure out where the drainage goes, where things might have to be moved to, maybe get it out of the right ways, adhesments on private property. So, that should be announced whether it happens in the next month or so. We'll see what happens. That's about $135,000 cost on top of a $119 that we've already signed for the design. We have the survey plans where things are, the current conditions. SMLD is gonna hold off right now on burying the utilities so that they don't get in the way if we have to do the water main, any drainage. It's not gonna matter as much in certain areas, but it is gonna matter definitely in some others. So, some questions coming down the pipe. We have funding to do the Verizon. When that gets buried, we do not have the funding at this point for the Comcast. Our portion for the electricity, obviously, SMLD is doing their part. So, we're fine there. We have purchased the light poles for when we do get to that. We have a conduit for that. But we don't have the money if we need to then do the water main, the road, the sidewalks. So, some things can get done rather quickly. Others are gonna take some time and more money if we're going to fully complete the project. I will recommend probably if we don't get the grant that we use some of the ARPA money for the water main stuff, and we may wanna use it for the Comcast so we can start working a little quicker. But Weston and Sampson's kind of holding off on their design up here if things are gonna change with drainage and/or water main.
Any questions? David?
No questions. I just wanna make the statement that one and done, right? If we have to do renovations or modifications, nothing makes me angry other than going in and ripping up a freshly...
I mean, you may have a water main break on a new line, but chances of that are a lot slimmer than a 100-year-old line that goes through town.
Let's try to do it once and do it right.
How about Maple Street is, what's the status?
So, getting surveyors is very difficult right now. So, they've got that completed. They should hopefully have a preliminary design in the next week or so for us. Obviously, it's not gonna get done before this construction season, but hopefully, it can be a early project next year.
Kendall Hill starting October 17th or...
That's what it was the last time I talked to Ryan.
That'd be nice if you could...
And some, there's a lot of, Kendall Hill's probably the one that we've seen the most. Osgood Road's another portion, but Clinton Road over there with the intersection is with Choxes. So, there's a lot of work that's gonna happen in the next couple of weeks if they get rolling Monday.
Well, I think that you need to reiterate too to the general public that, yes, this is a project that we've been talking about forever. And yes, we did get it off of the shelf, you know, through the EDC and dusted off, but it's still gonna take time and money and grants, et cetera, and so on. And, you know, now you'll have somebody else joining your team when Steve starts in a couple of weeks, new town planner. So, between you, Darren, Ryan, and Steve, along with Patty, I think it's a great team, and I have full faith that you'll move it forward. And then, if you really become nice and friendly with Mr. King, maybe you'll get some money from him.
Why do you think I say all rise every time?
I heard ARPA.
Yeah. Well, yes, and the ARPA funds we have to owe God for some of this.
We are gonna put that on the next agenda to look at, you know, we can do it as a contingent thing, waiting on the grant award. So, at least we can give word to Weston and Sampson to get them rolling if that's something you guys want. And we can also do it to do the Comcast piece if it wants. So, you know, let's discuss it then.
To me, it's, yeah. Okay, we'll discuss it then. The other thing, too, when we discuss, I, we're gonna overlook at all of the ARPA requests and fundings, okay? Because I'd really like to talk about the beach drainage, too. You know, can't really do much down there until that's fixed. So, it could be a subheading on your agenda item next time. So, anyway. Okay, so, PSAs is art in the park. It was rained out a couple of weeks ago, so it will be this Saturday, the 15th. Lot of things going on. The main is over in Memorial Park. You'll have the Sterling Street Market down here. You'll have things going on at the 1835. And that is this weekend, Mr. Maggie. Yes, this weekend, 10 to 3, in case you wanna take pictures. Also, you might wanna make a note that traffic will be interesting on October 24th. It is the spooky walk, and as everybody knows, it's the busiest traffic time downtown. So, and if anybody wants to participate, it's a free walk. If you wanna go into the party at the church with the Village Green, you gotta buy a ticket. But most of the fun is right outside and on the street and in the park. Lot of people participating in that. Early voting starts in person. Early voting starts on October 22nd, which is a Saturday. This is all posted on the webpage. You can go in and get all the dates and the times, and just know that November 8th, from 7 to 8, is the actual voting day for the state elections. And then, I think we need to put on our next agenda, too, Bill. Do you wanna be reviewed in public, or do you wanna just do a one-on-one with any of us as far as your performance? Okay. So, we'll put that on the agenda, please, comma. Also on the agenda, I'd like to see us invite the two new outreach workers for the Senior Center. I'd like the general public to know, A, we have two new outreach workers at the Senior Center, and B, who they are and put a face to them. So, if we could reach out to those two.
I believe that's the day that Veronica was coming anyway.
Well, I would like her to add.
The two outreach workers?
Yep. All right. I think for me, that's all I got. David?
Well, since our last meeting, I was the celebrity server at the Senior Center.
I heard that.
Yeah. It was entertaining.
Yes.
Had a good time. Had some laughs, met some nice people.
Lot of nice people out there.
Yeah. And met some...
Had a free breakfast?
I didn't eat because I had to go to work. So, you know, it was time constraints.
Okay. Finally, he goes to work. Okay.
That's all I have.
Well, we thank you for your service.
Well, you're welcome.
John?
Well, Browners Market's still going from 3:00 to 6:00 on Fridays, which is, and the Sterling Market is really booming every Saturday, it seems. There's a band out in front of the brick, I think it was, where the town halls, matter of fact, last year.
Oh, the town hall.
Yeah, it was pretty good. Only one question. I don't know if, I mean, I thought the DPW presentation a few weeks ago, a couple of was excellent. And I don't know if we want, if we need to bring them in before year end, or if we need to bring, like, what we've done before, different department heads, whether it be for an update on things, Senior Center. I don't know if we need.
Yeah, we've been doing that.
I know. I just don't know what comes next.
Senior Center's coming in.
Is it the Senior? Okay, that's good.
I swore we just said that.
I wasn't sure.
You weren't listening, were you?
I was trying.
You were somewhere else.
I was...
Coffee.
I was worrying about that four-foot putt I missed. And we'll be at the audit advisory meeting, Monday, October 24th, Wetruset Regional High School. We have to do, go through that. There's two or three of those meetings, and...
of those meetings, and, uh, uh, oh, and the only other question I had, and I'll bring back news on that, and the only other question, it'll be boring though, but, the only other question I had is, uh, how about, has the audit started yet, the outside audit, or do we know, Rose, I don't know, they have, are they scheduled to start soon, Vicky, or?
Not sure yet. Usually Fred lets me know when that's gonna happen.
Yeah, okay, usually, I would think, I know it's kinda late, usually November anyway, I think they, they've done some field work.
It's close to the end of the year, that's usually when we have it.
Good.
All right, I, I just, one more thing that, um, you know, this is not a, this is just, Ken Day, hundred and five, just passed away this past week, um, vibrant member of our town for years and years, and, um, you know, hearts go out to his friends and family and just about everybody in town that got a chance to touch base with him, he was the most interesting man to sit down and talk to over these past few years, so, um, hundred and five, good Lord take me sooner, but anyway. Richard, anything for you?
No, just a back reminder, thank you.
And Cross Street will be closed, I have.
Yes, good idea. I forgot that we had to do that. Joe, anything else from you?
Nothing additional.
Okay. Ms. Kama?
No.
Vicky?
No.
Well, thank you all for coming, um, anybody else that's interested, we have plenty of seats for you moving forward. Um, with that in mind, I will say, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
All those in, oh, any further discussion, John?
Uh, no.
Okay, good. All those in favor?
Bill, coin, aye.
Smith, aye.
Krantz, aye.
Thank you.
In the record.